Good evening, everyone. Now would be a perfect time to silence all electronic devices. The agenda of the school board meeting is published and available at least one week prior to the board meeting. Also, one week prior to the board meeting, members of the public have the opportunity to correspond with board members with those communications being part of the official record. Any member of the public who wishes to speak on an agendted item will have the opportunity to do so prior to final action being taken. Please fill out a speaker request card available on the lobby during public comment portion of the meeting. Names will be called as they are received. Any member of the public wishing to speak to a non-agendted item on matters relevant to school district will have an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting. Please fill out a speaker request card available on the lobby and names will be called as they are received. We welcome members of the public to attend our meeting and we respect the public's right to speak to the board. We will not tolerate behavior that disrupts the orderly conduct of this meeting, including yelling or speaking over others. Our civility policy is in effect. Our vision statement: All students achieve success in college, career, and life. Thought for the day is Alan Altman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This quote is from a book series called Educated Minds, and it says, "Some of the best advice I've ever been given was don't take criticism from people you would never go to for advice." And that's a good word.
Stands for pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to announce that all school board members are present, and I also would like to ask for a moment of silence for the family of Kimberly Soliere, a teacher at Mini Peelock Elementary School. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion for the minutes of the regular meeting of June 19th, 2022, and the workshop of June 19th, 2022.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, First Crumley, Second Bowdoin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, we now have some very special presentations. I'd like to call up Betsy Kuhn.
Good evening, Honorable Board Members. Attorney Alfonso, I'm playing Mr. Hagerty this evening, and I have some very special guests I'd like to introduce you to. I'd first like to introduce the Pasco Sheriff's Office Chain of Command. We are fortunate to have Sheriff Naco with us this evening, Colonel Harrington, Major Peak, Captain Jenkins, Lieutenant Ferguson, as well as the SRO Sergeants Justice and Oakley. I did not see Sergeant Maggio here, but maybe he snuck in. We also have Newport Ritchie, Lieutenant Meliker, Sergeant Burge, Corporal Norris, School Resource Officer G., School Resource Officer Jarena, and also Dade City Police Department Sergeant Moreno, and SROs Emerson and Baldwin. We are very proud to have this team, and also there are colleagues who are not with us this evening, protecting our students, staff, and schools and community each and every day. And we'd like to share a little bit more with you about some very prestigious awards that they recently won, and to recognize this entire team this evening. So I'd like to ask Chief Mike Baumeister to come to the podium and share more information.
You know just how special the awards are if you get all that hierarchy here.
All right, good evening, School Board Superintendent Browning, Deputy Superintendent Gad, Gad and staff. I also want to thank our law enforcement partners that were introduced by Assistant Superintendent Kuhn a few minutes ago. I appreciate you all attending. A couple of weeks ago, we, from the school board, Assistant Superintendent Kuhn, Hetzler, Nettles, and Isle, had the pleasure and were honored to be present at the FASRO conference when Pasco County's SRO program was honored as the best in the state. Now, it's no surprise to me that they were selected due to the incredible partnership we have with our sheriff's office and our local police agencies. I know there are counties in the state of Florida that cannot say that. I know that for sure. What impressed me the most is when the Pasco Sheriff's Office was going up to the podium to get their award and recognition, the Pasco Command insisted that we from the school board walk up with them to bask in the honor. Colonel Harrington gave an eloquent speech and pointed out that this honor was not only for them, but for all of us, and we really appreciate that. This speaks volumes as to why we have the best program in this state. It's not about the egos, it's not about what's best for, it's not about the egos, it's really what's best for our students, our staff, and we can have honest conversations with each other that leads to policy change and innovation that creates a safer environment for our schools. We don't wait for a law to change, we do what's right, and we do it now. This recognition is for our SROs and for what they do each and every day. I'd like to show you a small video that was sent as a nomination video, which illustrates why our SROs are best in the state.
Hi, I'm Chris Naco. I'm the sheriff in Pasco County, and I want to thank our school resource officers. Their phenomenal job, day in and day out, the pressures they go through, you know, the multiple things they're called upon to do, every time they are called upon to do it, they excel. You know, I start off my career at Philadelphia Public School Police. I understand the pressures they go through, and I think even today, it's much tougher than when I was in that position before. So I want to thank them day in and day out for everything they do, the commitment they have to the school, the commitment they have to the sheriff's office and to our community, and to changing the lives of every kid at school in a positive direction to make them leaders in our community for tomorrow.
The Pasco Sheriff's Office is dedicated to the safety and security of our community's children. We strive to lead innovative change in school security and have enjoyed a longstanding partnership with Pasco Schools. The Pasco Sheriff's Office serves Florida's 10th largest school district with more than 84,000 students and 11,000 employees in some 98 schools. Long before Centerville 7026, the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act, the Sheriff's Office partnered with Pasco County Schools to institute the most comprehensive revision to Pasco Schools' crisis response plan since the plan's inception and represented a major paradigm shift in thinking. The implementation of the new act of threat plan on the ATP transitioned Pasco Schools from a passive lockdown-only approach in crisis response to a proactive options-based model aligning with current federal guidance and recommended best practices. To introduce the ATP, we created an online ATP e-learning course that was delivered to more than 10,000 school district employees and all Pasco County law enforcement organizations over the course of two months. The course consists of interactive modules with combined theory and critical thinking exercises and is available in English, Spanish, and American Sign Language format. The Sheriff's Office SRO unit worked with the school district to create age-appropriate, interactive, video-based instruction to teach students about the new ATP. We created a series of videos for elementary, middle, and high school levels featuring narrators and actors from the associative peer group. The team created a unique cartoon live-action video for pre-K to second grade students which features one of our school resource officers interacting with the animated character. The video Stranger Danger was created to be a less frightening way to begin socializing the ATP at an early age. The Sheriff's Office and Pasco Schools continue to research and release periodic updates in our training to ensure the fidelity and implementation of all safety measures that were outlined in the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act. We then introduced highly interactive drills unlike anything Pasco Schools had ever experienced before. The Sheriff's Office organized and executed 134 active-threat drills in some 110 schools during the first semester when the ATP was introduced. The Sheriff's Office and Pasco Schools then implemented monthly active assailant training prior to legislation requiring such, further embedding the new protocol into the safety culture of each campus. Speed and communication are critical for safety and creating situational awareness. Emergencies aren't confined to our classrooms. Our students and staff are highly mobile, and campuses have large sprawl in footprints. The Sheriff's Office set a collaborative effort with partners to secure grant funding for the implementation of a school emergency alerting and incident management system through Crisiscope. This allowed for a panic alarm feature in every school and classroom more than a year ahead of legislation requiring such. Crisiscope is also integrated into the Sheriff's Office's real-time crime center and 911 emergency communication centers. The RTCC monitors school-based camera systems during any potential threat, crisis, or emergency occurring on or nearby a campus. This year, the Sheriff's Office Intelligence Surveillance and Reconnaissance Team, or ISR Team, expanded its use of drone technology to provide enhanced security and support to Pasco Schools. Drone support is now available if there is a threat to campus to provide an aerial perspective of a crowd or to assist with traffic management. Drones can also be used to prevent any danger to life or in the search for a missing student. In 2021, we accomplished one of our most significant school goals in achieving full implementation of Pasco Schools' reunification plan utilizing the standard reunification model, or SRM. The Sheriff's Office introduced the concept of regional off-site evacuation sites to help schools with continuity of operations and support. A team visited each site and developed a functional plan complete with maps and diagrams of how each site would be used for managing a reunification event. Last summer, the Sheriff's Office proposed an update to Pasco Schools' 12-page crisis flip charts that have been in use for more than a decade. The new site threat continuum was created, and the new two-sided grab-and-go poster now contains relevant updates, best practices for Marjory Stoneman Douglas, and covers essential functions and tasks to be taken during a campus emergency. In April of 2019, the Pasco Sheriff's Office collaborated with Pasco Schools to launch the Handle of Care Initiative. This model provides a child's school with a notification when a child has been identified at the scene of a traumatic event. The Sheriff's Office and Pasco Schools also work with behavioral health partners in our community to improve processes for students in crisis. The goal is to reduce Baker Acts and align children with community supports or pre-established care plans with families whenever it is practical and safe to do so. The Sheriff's Office partnered with BayCare Behavioral Health to offer mobile response team or MRT services on a 24/7 basis. In 2021, the Sheriff's Office contracted with Transcare Medical Services to provide private transportation for students who are taken into protective custody at a Pasco school. The project offers students who are in crisis a more dignified option for receiving services and is a far less traumatic experience than the arrest stigma associated with being taken away from a school in the back of a patrol car wearing restraints. The Sheriff's Office and Pasco Schools' partnership brings together diverse expertise with decades of experience. It is our goal to create schools that embody the safety mindset as a culture. We work on developing relationships with students that enhance academic and social, emotional success, and build a strong network of connections between students, staff, and law enforcement. These informal actions motivate lift spirits, and examples of fun and lighthearted moments humanize the badge. These relationships also help us know when students are struggling, help students feel safe, and sharing concerns with adults on campus.
We are very proud of our partnership with the Pasco Sheriff's Office and wholeheartedly support their application for Agency of the Year.
Our proactive partnership has helped us to be ahead of legislative requirements to keep our students and staff safe and is a model for others in the state to follow.
The Pasco Sheriff's Office team is always there for us when we need them.
And also, in addition to winning Agency of the Year, we also wanted to honor and recognize our own Lieutenant Troy Ferguson, who was awarded the Lifetime Achievement Award from FASRO, the Florida Association of School Resource Officers. And Captain Jenkins did an excellent speech at the FASRO conference, just honoring him and detailing all the many things that he has done over his career, including that this is not just his first lifetime achievement award, but his second lifetime achievement award that he has won. Chief Baumeister and I wrote a letter of support for Lieutenant Ferguson in this award, and I'd like to share a portion of that with you. Lieutenant Ferguson has been a true partner to Pasco Schools since he became our School Safety Lieutenant in 2015. Lieutenant Ferguson recognized the need to enhance our school safety plans and took on the project of completely revamping them in a time when school safety best practices that were needed were controversial. He designed and wrote a comprehensive, safety-focused, yet age-appropriate and sensitive active-threat and school safety plan and prepared it for implementation well before it was legislatively required. Lieutenant Ferguson is sought out by law enforcement agencies across the country to share his expertise and experience around school safety best practices. He has been a leader in many large-scale changes in the district's safety efforts, including the active-threat plan, See Something, Say Something, Threat Assessment, and recognizes that the role of an SRO is so much more than a law enforcement officer. He encourages his staff to be involved in their school communities and values mentoring and supporting our students. Lieutenant Ferguson understands and relates to our school and our school culture and district culture so well that, this is where you can't hear this, we often tease him about being a district employee as well as a deputy because he works so well with us. He's hardworking, smart, resourceful, and fun to work with, and our district is safer and better because of his vision and leadership. So I'd like to ask you to also honor Lieutenant Ferguson for this prestigious accomplishment.
Yeah. Lieutenant, you're not going anywhere without coming up. This deserves more than just a shout-out. We want to thank you personally. And we really want to thank Sheriff Naco, who is here today, for letting us have Lieutenant Ferguson, and I hope he continues to let us have him.
Would you like to make any comments, Sheriff Naco?
Troy does a phenomenal job, and as you do to budget, if you would like to include his full salary. Greatly appreciate that also. You guys set yourselves up for that one. I just saw the Colonel, I said, oh, maybe I'll pick up the budget.
Well, we'll pay him like a district employee.
So, no, I want to say thank you very, very much. I'll tell you, from the superintendent, the board... I'll tell you, from the superintendent, the board, Mr. Guy, Mrs. Coon, Chief Baumeister, the partnership we have is phenomenal. And so as I was sitting there, I was writing down some notes. Unfortunately, this is how, I used to be pencil and pen, but I had to go to technology because I don't have one right now. So, a couple of things, we talk about our school resource officers, you know, Major Peak, Captain Jenkins, and Lieutenant Ferguson, and the entire team. It is a true partnership, and I'll tell you, when they started the Guardian program, I think some of you may remember, we were the first ones, we got it kicked up, and we had it running and going. And we sent, and people actually from across the Tampa Bay and across the state said, can we have your training plans in place? That's because we were working together. The fact that, you know, the radio system, there's no two separate agencies, you know, the Guardians are on the same plan we are, we're all in that together, we're all training together, we're working together, that makes a huge difference. And, you know, the projects that go on to school, and I know most of the time it's talking about school safety and, you know, you're worried about the worst-case scenarios, but, you know, a couple of things, we talk about that mental health program. You know, as Mr. Guy is a part of some programs across the state, people are reaching out saying, what are you guys doing there? Because it does make a difference. It's a huge difference, and in fact, if we can reduce Baker Acts, that is impressive. You know, we take away the fact that a kid gets taken away in a patrol car and goes into a white van, nobody knows the difference, they think they're going to an orthodontist. They don't know what the person's going through, but some of the things that many people don't realize that go on because of the connection that we have. If a child is Baker-acted because a mother recalls on a Thursday afternoon that, you know, a young woman or a young man tried to commit suicide, they tried to harm themselves, the school district would never know about that come Monday morning when they get released. But because of the partnership we have together, we can say, hey, just want to let you know, this student, you know, is in need, is in crisis, they're coming back to school, and then you guys can wrap your arms around them with, you know, counselors, teachers. The other one too is, you know, sometimes we have to go to houses in the middle of the night because of a homicide, a shooting, something that went on, and there's students there. Well, the great partnership we have is the fact that the school resource officers reach out and say, to that school, and say, hey, just want to let you know, this incident occurred in that school. That child is probably coming in, you know, been up all night, is in disarray, can you help them out? Where, in a lot of other places, they have no idea what is going on. You know, the partnership, the clothing, that we, you know, we partner together to get these clothing closets into schools. These are things that go on behind the scenes, but it's because of our partnership. So again, I want to say thank you all very much, because, you know, we hear across the state about the friction that can go on between a district and the sheriff's office, and who's going to be in charge of what. Well, the good thing about all of us is that it's about the kids first, and the kids are the priority, and it doesn't matter, you know, who gets the credit, because it's about helping those kids. But the nice thing is, because we've been, everybody's been working together, the credit's been shown out there, that what we are doing works, and it's because of the women and men that are out there in these schools, working with the teachers, working along with the administration. But, you know, I give them credit, because I can imagine there's many sleepless nights when somebody gets the call and says, hey, there's an email that just went out, there's a text message, in this community, everybody's talking about an active shooter going on, and everybody gets, and they're all worked up, and next day, the nervousness and things that go on. Yeah, they all run little cities themselves, they're all little sheriffs in that, oh, you're all big, depends on how tall you are. You're all sheriffs in those schools, because they are cities. They are the size of little cities that are in there working, and a lot of times they're by themselves, and as I say, the more we can grow that partnership, the better off we're going to be, and I want to say thank you very much, and to all of them, congratulations, great job. And honestly, I appreciate everything you do, day in and day out, because I know I'll get the call, and then you guys get the call next, and the stress level keeps building for all of us. So with that being said, thank you very much, and thank you for the partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you. So much.
Madam Chairman, if I may, before we take some photographs, I would be remiss not taking the opportunity to express my thanks. I was fortunate enough to attend the luncheon yesterday for the SROs, and I will, because we have a different audience here today, I want to say pretty much the same thing, and that is, thank you. Thank you for what you do every day in our schools to keep our students and staff safe. To echo what Sheriff Naco has said, when I attend superintendent's meetings across the state, there are still districts that still is like sandpaper with their law enforcement folks, and I can tune them out, because we don't have that, never did from day one. I want to publicly thank Sheriff Naco and his command team, and his officers, our city partners, Newport Ritchie and Dade City, thank you for being a part of this team, and doing the things you do for our kids each and every day. It is always, as a superintendent, it's always, the sheriff talks about phone calls, I never want that phone call that says something has happened in one of our schools. But I will tell you that this district, in working hand-in-glove with our sheriffs and our cities, we are doing everything we possibly can to ensure a safe learning environment for our students and our staff. And we continue to monitor, we continue to improve, and it's an ongoing process. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to everybody that plays a part of that. Thanks, Sheriff.
Yes, thank you so much. All right, we're back in session, and we're to four point one, which is the District School Board of Pasco County Policies Update, the NEOLA twenty-two point one and twenty-two point two, the May Special Edition Updates and District Revisions. So I'll turn it over to Attorney Alfonso.
Thank you. This is to announce the public comment portion of the public hearing on the District School Board of Pasco County Policies Update, NEOLA twenty-two point one and twenty-two point two, May Special Update and District Revisions. The policies that have proposed changes are listed on the agenda. Notice that the hearing has been posted on the district website and publication in compliance with Florida statutes, and publication of general circulation in Pasco County in compliance with Florida statutes. Any members of the public who wish to be heard on the District School Board of Pasco County Policies Update, NEOLA twenty-two point one and twenty-two point two, May Special Update and District Revisions, are asked to complete a green speaking request card that you can obtain from the board secretary or at the entrance to the boardroom. When your name is called, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak unless an extension is granted by the board chair.
Madam Chair, but before you start, could I, I wanted to ask Mr. Shibley a couple things.
Yes, I just want, need to make one comment first, and then we'll do that. Yeah, just so there's, as you heard Attorney Alfonso say, it's only for the policies that we're actually voting on today, so that some of you might be wanting to talk about a different policy, and that policy would need to be talked about during, at the end of the meeting. So this is only for the ones that are being voted on today. And yes, you had some questions.
Thank you, yes, because I did forget to ask these at the workshop publicly, and I said I would to a parent. So, Mr. Shibley, there were two things that I wanted to follow up on. One was to ask you to clarify all the places where it said, like, something like a timely notification, or in a timely manner, and why, as far as notifying parents, and why the policy doesn't say immediately. We could start with that.
And those are the emergency management policies. Yeah, so the language is basically worded in a way that provides that notification to parents when the schools are able. As I think the board is aware, every crisis or emergency at a school is unique, and so I think the first order of business is for the administrators and law enforcement to assess and get control of the situation, and then plan communications from there. So that's why it doesn't necessarily call for immediate, because in some cases, immediate may not be possible. In some cases, law enforcement may request that we wait to communicate until certain criteria have been met. So there are a variety of reasons why we felt immediate might give a false expectation, but it is always the commitment to communicate as soon as it is safe to do so and appropriate to do so.
Thank you. And the other thing was, I had a question about why we're voting on the parent bill of rights, the policies that adhere to the parent bill of rights when we're still editing and revising.
So there are a lot of cross-references, and I think you noticed that when we reviewed it at the workshop. And so it is some, it is additional work that we're going through to make sure that all of the cross-references are identical and that we mirror, and so we are going to continue to make those modifications to make sure that everything is in full alignment. The existing parent bill of rights, or parent and student rights policy, is very small and does not contain any of the references to the changes that occurred during the legislative session. And so we did take a full reading through that. We have checked the cross-references, there are no direct conflicts. There are some things that we can clean up over time, but we certainly feel that it's better to let our parents and community know what their rights and expectations can be of us, you know, moving forward. And so that's why the policy is being brought before you now, so that we can at least make that interim step of codifying in one place all of the legislative changes that occurred relative to parent rights and obligations.
And as changes occur, they come back to us, correct?
Absolutely.
Just like a normal hearing.
Absolutely. And I've got a follow-up batch, after we had the workshop last week, I already received some of the additional follow-up that will need to happen in the next update. So that update is going to start almost immediately, and I'm sure that we will include some of those additional changes in that next update. So as I think the board has kind of learned over time, it is an ever-evolving process, we're constantly modifying and revising to make sure that we're keeping track and up to date, not only with the law, but trends in education, what's happening throughout the state, and what works best for our district.
Well, and I'd like to add, it's important we codify these policies so that our staff and teachers know what's going on, and can be trained properly in all these new things, new areas.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions, Ms. Brown?
No, thank you. And you had answered all my questions, but I wanted to make sure I did it publicly, because I said I would. Thank you.
All right, now we begin the public hearing. If you need to wave off and put your remarks later, you can just wave your hand, and we'll move the card to the appropriate place. But the first one up is Michelle Mandrian.
Before I start, I just wanted to make note that I'm in a place for Erin Pike, she couldn't make it, so I'm reading on her behalf. So I'm Michelle, I'm from Spring Hill. Why are we receiving these for public comment when there are still duplicates and work in progress? Seven, five, seven, eight, zero, for example. But the ones that passed the workshop, that makes sense, but don't waste our time looking at policies that are not even ready. Why is fifty-one twenty not there for public comment? Florida statute says suggestion for revisions may be made by community members, and we are not allowed to be heard, since the board refused to address it last week. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Debbie Parker.
I live at eleven oh four Foxwood Drive, have lived there for thirty years. I'm a school employee at the bus department, and my question is, if you don't have it in the budget...
Oh, I'm so sorry, Debbie. I'm going to call you back up later when we open up the, you're actually speaking on the budget, correct?
Yeah, regarding the new job positions that you have.
And I, it's my mistake, I'm going to call you back up, so you're going to get a second chance to say all of that, because this is on the policies.
Okay.
All right, that was my mistake, sorry. All right, now we'll be opening up the public hearing on the budget. This is the proposed tentative budget for 2022-23. This is the first public hearing. And Superintendent Browner, you have some remarks to make.
Yes, ma'am, I do, as is my custom. Tonight, the board is tentatively adopting the 2223 fiscal year budget. You're required by law to adopt the millage rates, and once these millage rates are adopted, the district will certify them to the property appraiser to begin the notice to the residents for the upcoming tax year. Additionally, the district was required to certify the adoptive budget to the FDOE. And that said, the 2223 tentative budget is one billion, seven hundred and twenty-two million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars, an increase of two hundred and fifty-one million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one million over last year's budget. The budget includes a general operating budget of eight hundred and forty-eight point six million, and a capital budget of four hundred and fifty-five million dollars. The total tax millage for the 2223 fiscal year is five point five one six mils. That's a decrease, a decrease of point two nine four mils. Under the proposed rate, a homeowner of a one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home, after the deduction of twenty-five thousand dollar homestead exemption, would pay forty-four dollars and ten cents less per year than last year. than last year. This illustration does not take into account the increase in property values. The general operating budget increased from $734.5 million to $848.6 million. The district received an additional funds totaling $57.2 million in state funding to accommodate our projected growth of 3,588 students and recurring expenses. Out of the $57.2 million, an additional $12 million is set aside for school choice. That's for charter schools and the scholarships. $4.5 million for retirement increases, $3 million for health insurance increases, and approximately $3.2 million for VPK expansion, utilities, fuel, materials and supplies, and SRO contract increases. The budget includes an increase of 115.4 school allocations and no district allocations for an increase of $7,770,814. The operating budget covers allocations and operating costs of $1.4 million for the opening of Kirkland Ranch Academy of Innovation and what is currently called Angeline 612. The budget also includes an allocation of $6.8 million to continue to increase the minimum base salary for full-time classroom teachers. Additionally, $9.8 million is budgeted to raise minimum district salaries to $15 per hour. $2.3 million for guest teachers and other funds for employee salaries to be negotiated with the union. Capital budget is $455 million, an increase of $116 million over last year. The major capital projects are for the renovation of Hudson High School, the construction of the new Gulf High School, the construction of what we call Angeline 612 Academy, and the construction of Kirkland Ranch K8 and a new classroom wing at the new Starkey K8. Other projects include cafeteria renovations, replacement of HVAC systems, and infrastructure upgrades at various schools. The 2223 budget also reflects fiscal priorities which prioritize and support student achievement. Additionally, it is designed to ensure the smooth delivery of effective school operations while prioritizing the needs of our students and the community. The budget is, as you know, a living document and continuously changes as the year progresses. Budget amendments will be submitted to the Board to reflect any changes to the budget, document what's adopted by the Board. That being said, Madam Chairman and members, I'm respectfully requesting your approval of the 2223 tentative fiscal year budget as presented. Madam Chairman, before I turn the budget, hearing back to you, there's been some recent social media chatter regarding excess funds or funding the district has received over last year's budget. I would like for Mr. Shibley to provide the Board and our public with some additional factual information that will bring clarity into these recent misleading statements. Mr. Shibley?
Absolutely. I'm going to have Richard help me a little bit. I think we've preloaded. So what I've tried to do for the Board is kind of create a, a flowing document that compares funding and expenditures from the time you adopted the budget last year to the tentative budget that you are considering this year. And we know that there has been some comments on social media about the district having plenty of excess recurring funds to provide salary increases, not needing a referendum for salaries, and that we have $114, you know, million dollars that we could use to provide salary increases to employees. So I wanted to take a minute just to kind of walk the Board through this because I think it's a perfect example of when $114 million is not $114 million. So at the top, top section of this is basically the state restricted categorical funds and scholarships. As the Board's aware, every time we receive increases in funding from the state, a big chunk of that is put into restricted categoricals and is also shunted to pay scholarship payments. And so I'll kind of go through some of those categoricals. You'll see the first line on there is for student, services to exceptional student education, students, and that's about 1.8 million. Supplemental reading programs for students, 1.3 million. School safety and security, an increase of about 800,000. Transportation, an increase of 2.9 million. And I would be remiss in saying, even with that increase of 2.9 million, we still are unable to provide transportation with the funds the state provides. We are always spending in excess of what the state provides. So even with that 2.9 million, we're still not covering the costs of transporting our students. The teacher salary increase allocation of 7.6 million for this year, that does represent about a 2.65% salary increase to our teachers. That increase is about the same statewide. So every district in the state is getting this teacher salary increase allocation and it's roughly that same percent for, for all, for all counties. There was an increase of about $700,000 specifically for mental health services for students. Instruction materials, another $750,000. Some increases to the teacher supply assistance funds that go to teachers and schools at the beginning of the year. Supplemental academic instruction, which goes to extended school day and extended school year services for kids that need some, some additional assistance during the school year and over the summer. There's an increase there of about $700,000. We did see the elimination or reduction of both the digital classroom and the Department of Juvenile Justice supplemental allocations. There was an increase in turnaround supplemental services of about 1.5 million dollars. These are funds that are going to go specifically to those 13 schools that the state identified on their, their recent list. Family empowerment scholarships, this is something that has hit the district really hard that, that I want to make sure that the communities understand. That last year, the state changed the way that they processed private and homeschool scholarships for students. Instead of paying those scholarships out of a separate bucket at the state level, they are funneling those scholarships through the district. So you will see that we are paying out almost $34 million in scholarships. So it's basically the money's coming in on the right hand and immediately it's going out the door with the left hand. So you'll see significant increases there in both the family empowerment and McKay scholarships. So before we even got started with any spending, that accounted for about $42 million of our budget that was either restricted by the state or sent right out the door before the money hit our bank accounts. The next section is assigned fixed cost increases that the district experienced. Again, the state increased the retirement contribution rates for all employees to the tune of $4.2 million for Pasco. Our charter schools, like our schools, continue to grow and we have to pass along the growth dollars to the charter schools, just like we get additional growth dollars for our kids. It's about $5.3 million. Software licenses for some of the programs and services that our schools and kids use in the classroom just experienced the normal cost of, cost of living increases that go along with escalation of those services for about $163,000. Our utility bills and the maintenance parts that go along with keeping our schools running, about $1.6 million. Fuel increases for transportation, another million dollars. The $15 minimum wage that the superintendent referenced earlier is going to cost about $9.3 million. Light teacher salary increase categorical, that is money that goes directly to our salaries, but it only goes to a portion of our employees. It doesn't benefit all employees. And then we also have to make payments, statutory payments that are associated with AP, IB, ACE, and industry certification as outlined in Florida statute. So those assigned fixed costs represent another $22.5 million out of, out of the district's budget. When we get to other non-salary increases to the budget, between the time that the budget was approved last year and the projections for this year, the district and our schools, separate from charters and scholarships, basically experienced a growth of 5,000 students. In order to meet class size, that represents about the need for 250 additional teachers at a cost of $17.5 million. We have two new schools, one that opened this year and one that we are in the process of opening for next year. And so there are some overhead associated with the opening of those schools. $365,000 for Angeline and just over a million dollars to finish out the overhead for Kirkland Ranch. The superintendent mentioned VPK expansion, that's about $200,000. The school resource officer contracts that we have with the wonderful folks that were here earlier represent about $250,000 of increases for the coming year. Health insurance for the employee health insurance plan is expected to require an additional $3 million in district contributions. Our workers' comp program has increased in cost and so we had to budget an additional $363,000 to cover our workers' comp obligations. Again, with the minimum wage increasing, substitute rates of pay had to be increased to the tune of $2.8 million. School and, other school and district program increases to offer programs for, for our students, those increases represented about $900,000. So you see there are some non, non-salaried increases to the budget that represent about $26.3 million in that section. The last section that I have are assigned costs that are going to be returning to the general fund from ARPESR. As the Board's aware, we did receive some COVID relief funds through the American Rescue Plan and ESR. Those funds are set to expire and we do have some recurring expenses that are going to have to be brought back into the general fund. And so we have to budget for those things to return to the general fund once ARPESR is no longer able to pay them. The balance of the substituting contract is the biggest cost, separate and apart from the increase. That's about $8.5 million annually that it costs us to run our substitute program for our schools. We have graduation enhancement programs at about a quarter of a million dollars and course and credit recovery software for our middle and high schools at $400,000. Naviance, which is the counseling, career, and college planning tool that will be available to all of our sixth through 12th graders at $218,000. Our occupational nurse at $81,000. And the Crisis Go Safety, School Safety Alert System that was actually referenced in the video earlier is about $82, $83,000. So collectively, we have just shy of $10 million worth of expenses coming out of ARPESR and returning to the general fund. So when you add all of those things together, it is right at $100 million. And so while it is true that the district has seen an increase of about $115 million from the time they adopted the budget, by the time you subtract all of these restrictions, categoricals, pass-throughs for scholarships, you know, overhead costs and expenditures that go along with being a growing district, we really only have about $14 million left for additional salary increases to employees. When you consider that it costs about $4.7 million to give a 1% salary increase to the district's employees, that means after the teacher salary increase and the minimum wage, we do have enough for an additional 3% increase. So I think you're seeing that the Board is budgeting and that we are planning for moderate salary increases to our employees, but it is nowhere near the level that is going to catch us up with our surrounding districts, especially those that have multiple sources of revenue where we are reliant solely on state revenue.
Mr. Shibley, can you share this with us?
Absolutely. I will, I will email it to all of the board members.
Thank you for your hard work on that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Shibley, thank you very much. Yes.
Made it very.
All the questions this week. Yep.
Madam Chairman, I just thought it was, I thought it was important, Mr. Shibley shared this information with staff today and I just thought that it was important that we would share publicly what the real numbers are. And as Mr. Shibley says, when $115 million isn't $115 million, almost everything on this list, I say not almost everything, but a huge portion of what's on this list that he provides to you is what the state tells us we will and we shall spend out of the money they send to us or that they are going to, or that, like the scholarships, that they're just going to just pay directly, but that's less money that's coming back to us for kids that we thought we were going to have in our system. So I just thought it'd be best to put that information out there and help quell some of the misinformation that's being shared out there on social media. With that, Madam Chairman, we're ready to take public comment on the budget.
Okay, all right. I, I love the transparency of that. Thank you so much.
Attorney Alfonso. Thank you. This is to announce the public comment portion of the first of two hearings on the District School Board of Pasco County budget for the 2022-2023 school year. The second and final hearing will be held on September 12, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Notice that this hearing has been posted on the district website and publication in a compliance with Florida statute 1011.03. Any members of the public who wish to be heard on the budget are asked to complete a Green Speaking Request Card that you can obtain from the Board Secretary or at the entrance to the boardroom. When called, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak unless an extension is granted by the Board Chair.
All right. And so now Debbie Parker, if you please come back up. I'm sorry about the calling you up too soon.
Okay, it's important to listen. It's how you learn. My question is, is you keep stating that the transportation department, which is what I'm part of, doesn't have money to increase the bus drivers' salaries that you do have left and hopefully will have left after October. I don't know how many you'll have left after then. That's a big concern to me because I'm also a grandparent with a child in the school system who's had terrible problems with the buses. But I see here underneath your budget, you have new jobs listed, Senior Manager of Transportation Department and new job description, Transportation Customer Service Representative 6. We're wondering, we don't know anything about that in our department and the bus department and how can you be having new jobs in transportation when you can't take care of the ones that you already got?
Mr. Shibley, Madam Chairman, if I may.
And how can, was it 2.9, was it million for, for the transportation department? If we have less employees, how are we still not covering to be able to have bus drivers and not lose people? We need new drivers and we're not going to get them with even a $15.
If you can, finish your comments. If there's no other comments, because I want your time not to run out on you.
Yeah, no, that's all I want to know.
Okay. I'm going to have, if I can, Madam Chairman, I'd like for Ms. Coon and/or Mr. Shibley to answer your questions about the job descriptions as well as the salary increases.
Yeah, we, that's what we're worried about in transportation.
As I am worried about it.
We're, we're tired. Nine-hour jobs are a lot.
All right, thank you.
Good, those questions answered.
If I can address the increase first, I mean, Mr. Shibley did say there was an increase, but we typically refund it about half of what we spend in transportation. So that's historically where we've been. To answer that question, as far as the new job descriptions, the customer service representative positions are allocations that have been unfilled in the department for years and years. As you all know, we're not able to fill anywhere near all of our driving allocations. And one of the most common concerns we heard from schools and from families is that when they call the bus garage, they can't reach anybody. And so what we're planning to do with these positions is to create almost a year-round call center. And I know that you are, work out of Central Garage and so they have not had their in-service yet. That's next week. So there will be some more information that will be shared about those positions, but as I'm sure you are aware, the garage staff are driving. And so there's no one to answer the phone there. And we were looking for a dedicated way to have some people to answer the phone and try to help the frantic parents when they call and say, where is my bus? Where is my child? I don't know where they are. So that is, those, those positions. There is a route analyst position that was also referenced. One of the things that has really helped us with transportation over the past year is that achieving efficiencies as much as we can and those, those routers are able to reduce some of the routes that we have. So we're able to cover as many as we possibly can. As far as the senior manager positions referenced, those are position upgrades. They're not new positions in the department. Transportation is the district's largest department and does not have the structure that meets the other district departments or even close to it. And that was intended to do some succession planning and also some reorganization and structure for the department. Transportation, as I mentioned, is the district's largest department and does not have any senior managers at the time.
So that's going to be revenue neutral?
Yes, all those positions, all of those positions are, are revenue neutral. They were used with allocation. And we have many, many more positions that we can't fill, well beyond the ones that we are proposing to convert.
Yeah, I think that was important because, you know, when someone reads it, it looks like we're adding two positions here and not converting. So I'm glad to clarify that.
All of these are conversions.
I knew that, but I think that it was important.
So it's nothing, it's just neutral?
Yeah, it's your jobs. It says new jobs.
Right.
They're new jobs, but they're, they're converted. And I can maybe step out and talk to you if that would be helpful.
Well, I just wondered, can I, somebody declare it up? Because it looks like adding.
And I'd be happy to chat with you about it. I do know that you have your in-service next week and so there'll be some more information shared. So the drivers are just returning on the west side. Today was their first day back. And on the east and central, they have in-service next week.
It's an allocation that was already there, not.
It's like a title change.
It's a title change. And we do that from time to time. I know there was one at the last board meeting that was done in the Safety and Security Department where it's just a title change. There's no salary increase or position increase. It's just a strict title change.
Thank you so much. Mr. Shibley, is there anything left to say?
No, I think, I think Mrs. Coon addressed it. As the superintendent mentioned in his comments, there were zero new allocations that hit district departments with general, general operating funds. So, you know, we did have some departments that explored converting positions as, as Ms. Coon mentioned, but they were only permitted to do that if it was revenue neutral or resulted in a budget savings to the district.
All right. Thank you so much. James Washington. And I have a question for you when you get up here.
Do you want to ask your question first?
Yes, this is a hearing on the budget. Do you want to split your, your time? I know we really probably should have split her time, but do you want to roll it off? I know we really probably should have split her time, but do you wanna roll it all into budget or do you want to speak separately on eleven point five later?
She's talked about the one issue, I think, on budget. I'm not sure if the programs on support, SSAP is part of the budget or not, the way it is written.
No, it's, it really will go into the, roll into the.
So then I'll, I'll move back if you have.
I'll bring you up again for that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. That moves us to. Are there any off-agenda items that we need to address?
Madam Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do have one more public hearing.
Well, no. You don't have a public hearing.
We have to announce, announce the, okay, adopt, do need to adopt the tentative millage rate resolution.
Move to approve.
Do you wish to state anything about that before we start?
It's been advertised.
And you just explained it.
All right. Yes, okay, so we have the proposed tentative millage rate resolution that was published. And we voted on last week and that was then advertised and published. So now we're moving adoption of that tentative millage rate resolution. People in the audience wanna know what we're doing. All right, so we got a first by Crumley.
Before I second it, can I ask Ms. Taylor something? I wanted her to just clarify a little bit that we had talked and I, and I asked this question.
You need to get a second first.
Okay, all right, I'll second.
Discussion, okay. A second by Bowen. Now we can have a discussion.
I, I just, and I ask every year for this to, to explain it again, how, how, when we actually have a millage that's lower than last year, why we have to advertise it as an increase? Every year, I just think it's good to have a little bit of explanation again.
Sure, so Kevin and the superintendent went through a lot of information. I had some other details, but those were some of the bullets I had to talk about. So although the tax base continues to increase in the county, which was eighteen point eight percent higher this year, the school district is subject to a rollback rate. The rollback rate is a rate that would generate the same amount of property tax revenues as approved for the prior year. The proposed millage rate is a decrease from the prior year of point two nine four mils and the lowest millage rate since nineteen seventy-one. Any millage amount proposed above the required local effort, which this year's three point two six eight mils, must be advertised as a tax increase. So the additions that we have proposed are the point seven four eight for discretionary operating and one point five for capital outlay.
And the discretionary we have to do because if we do not do it.
Yes, we are, could be, if it's not levied per the legislator, we could jeopardize five hundred and twelve million dollars in our state funding.
Right, so not only would we lose the funds generated by that millage, we would also be penalized an additional.
It's, it's not really discretionary in a way.
That's my point. Yeah. That's my point. I just wanted her to, thank you for.
You're welcome.
But let me, but let me, just, Madam Chair, if I may, let me just, hopefully I'll clarify something. The increase or decrease is all driven by the required local effort. Is that correct? The required local effort. So even if the required local effort goes down, which it did, you have to add the one point five capital and the point seven four eight discretionary in there. And then it raises it more than you had last year, therefore they call it a tax increase. So it, it's crazy, but it's what the law says and you have no other choice than to advertise it that way.
I know, I'm just frustrated. I just wanted to go on the record again that.
Let the record reflect that the superintendent and board member number two.
I think we all are. You can say we all are.
You know, and just as an illustration, Mrs. Bowman, I did kind of the calculation on the, the point three mils, roughly point three mils and, and the tax base. And that's a loss of almost fourteen million, fourteen million dollars based on the rollback.
Thank you for saying that because that's what I was saying. We lose that and we get penalized. Yes, because my own husband came in and put the newspaper on my lap and I said, you said, I had to explain to him. So it is very frustrating.
Well, it's confusing too.
Because it is confusing to the public when we say we're lowering the millage and then it has to be advertised as an increase. Okay, my rant is over.
All right, any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we need to adopt the tentative budget resolution. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, first Harding, second Crumley, any discussion?
All the questions you've done in half.
Yeah, I think what we've, we have had some excellent information on that during this meeting. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we're gonna set the final public hearing date on Monday, September 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the school board meeting room at the administrative complex. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second, okay.
All right, first Harding, second Altman, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so that closes the public hearing on the proposed tentative budget for 2022-23. That now leads us to, if there's any off-agenda items.
No ma'am, there are none.
Okay, that brings us to public comment on agenda items only. And the first one is Amy Murray. Oh, your speech.
This is the opportunity for the public to be heard on items appearing for action on the meeting agenda. Copies of the agenda are available at the entrance to the boardroom. To speak at this time, you must have submitted a green speaking request card located on the table at the entrance to the boardroom. The form must indicate the specific item or items you wish to address. Speakers wishing to address general matters not on the agenda should complete the pink speaking request card and will have an opportunity to speak later in the meeting. Speakers who wish to speak on both types of topics will have their available time allocated among topics and will have to save non-agenda comments for the appropriate segment of the agenda. If you have any materials you wish to share with the board, please provide them to the board secretary prior to speaking. Each speaker has up to a total of three minutes to address the board. If you see the yellow light on the podium, please wrap your comments up to leave time for other speakers. Speakers will be called to come forward by the chair. Prior to making your remarks, please state your name and address for the record. All speakers and comments are subject to applicable school board bylaws and policies, including those requiring appropriate decorum and civility. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. Staff members shall not be expected to answer questions from the audience unless called upon by the board chair or the superintendent.
All right, Amy.
My name's Amy Murray. I live at fifty-seven twelve White Trilliam Loop. I'm a mom of an upcoming sixth grader to Pineview Middle School. As of Saturday, I was told that my address does no long, does not qualify to receive a school bus. Although on MapQuest, Google and also Waze, we are two miles, two point one miles and two point two miles away from the school. My question is regarding eleven point five with the allocations of six administration positions for the Transportation Department and cutting so-called courtesy buses. I was told that, from transportation, that my household is measuring one point nine eight miles away from the school, which means that my daughter is no longer able to receive transportation to and from school. Now, since you guys are big on numbers, there are six missing children in Pasco County this year. In the two miles between my home and the school just this year, four sex offenders live. One drive-by took place and one, one dead junkie in the preserve that my daughter will have to walk past every day on a street that has no sidewalks, no crossing guards. Now, this room was filled with police officers earlier. Right? Police officers that patrol and protect our kids once they get to school. Who is gonna protect them on the way to school and on the way home from school? They have to walk past a public preserve with, a, a dead bobcat was found last week. Rattlesnakes, no lights in the dark, no adult supervision. But how can we qualify and, and six administration positions while putting children at risk and making them, forcing them, my eleven-year-old, to walk two miles? Two miles back and forth, so it's four miles total round trip without supervision.
All right, thank you. Next up is Michelle Turn, and then after that is Mr. and Mrs. Parsons. Michelle, I'm sorry, yes, that is a I. I thought it was a T. Sorry.
Good evening. My name's Michelle Ierna. I'm on fifty-six oh six Sweet William Terrace. I'm in a similar situation as the previous speaker. My house is over two miles to the school based on all of the maps that I have. But the county has told me that I'm one point nine five miles away from the school. They are taking it from the edge of my property to the first entrance of the school, which is where the buses go in, but that's not getting them to the school. My son is eleven. He is going into sixth grade. And it is very difficult to explain to him why he has to be walking down a street that is two lanes in the dark without any protection. It's very uncomfortable to tell him that I have to take off work to try to get him home from school. I have to take off work to pick him up on early release days. And there is no solution. I have emailed everybody on this board and nobody has said anything to me but figure it out. What do you want us to do as parents? What is the solution here? How did they figure out that my house is one point nine eight mi, nine five miles? It is not. If you look it up in Waze, if you look it in Google Maps, it is longer than that. It is a very hard walk. I walked it myself. I got sunburnt. I got blisters and it took us over an hour to get to the school. What is the solution here? Does anybody have a solution for all of these kids that are gonna be stuck walking on a two-lane road without any sidewalks, without any supervision? What is the solution? Especially since there's creative geography happening here. Like, why would you figure it from the edge of my property to the entrance of the bus route? That does not get him to school. What is the solution? Is there any solution from the board? I've emailed multiple people and have gotten figure it out. Does anybody have any solution to all of the families that are in the same situation that I am?
I'm sorry, the board does not comment there.
But that's, that's my statement.
Thank you. All right, and I'm so sorry, I cannot pronounce the first name, but the last name is Parsons. If you'd please inform me, I'd love to learn how to pronounce it.
It's Benita Parsons. I live at five-five-seven-four Sweet William Terrace.
Thank you.
It's the same issue. I was told my kids are one point nine eight miles. I have two little ones. I work, I'm a single mom. I can't take them to and from school. My teenager has to rearrange her schedule to get them to school. That's not fair to us. You guys can't protect our kids in school from shootings. The least you could do is make sure they get to school safely. We're two miles away, more than two miles. There's no sidewalks. There's grass. There's snakes. There are rapists. Kids hang out and have sex there. There are multiple beer cans. If you walk to the gate of the preserve, there are condoms laying there. I'm willing to pay extra to transportation just to get my kids to school. It's not fair that you guys carve out four houses on a whole street. How are my kids gonna feel when their friends are taking the bus and they have to walk in the hot sun? My daughter has asthma. My son has a hard time breathing when he walks. Anything can happen and I'm at work. I work downtown. I can't rush back. God forbid something happens to my kids. And when I call Transportation, it's the same thing. Oh, take it up with Tallahassee. What kind of response is that for a parent that is trying to, you know, nobody gave us the option, hey, parents, do you guys wanna pay transportation to have your kids come to school? I'm pretty sure if we had that option, we would have said, yes, we'll help pay to get our kids to school. All I keep hearing is it's a courtesy, it's a courtesy. It's not a courtesy. A lot of us parents pay property tax. You know how the street that these kids have to walk through, you guys can drive to Pineview Middle in the middle of the night and you will see that walk has no sidewalk. From the time the sidewalk cuts off to the school and the entrance, the transportation told me, the first gate, that's the bus depot. If, that's not even a door. That's the bus depot. If they cut through there and they get hit by a bus, what happens to them? You know, it, it's like you're telling them four o'clock when it starts to get dark. You have ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen-year-olds walking in the dark. That area is not safe. And like, like Amy mentioned, the four sex offenders, those are the four that are registered. God knows how many more are not registered. And, and it's, kids walk, they have their headphones on. How, you don't see who's coming up behind you. And all of these sex offenders know that these kids are not getting buses. They, they know the area. I mean, if we can't protect kids in school, at least let's protect them getting to school. Every kid deserves to feel safe going to school.
Thank you. James Washington. And then Jessica DeCusa.
So James Washington, I work at Pasco High School. I'm a graduation enhancement coach. I will also start by saying I've walked that route for the last week. That's all I've done as a candidate for school board, is walk the route that they're telling you. It can't be done safely as a twelve-year-old. I've also walked the walk from St. Joe's Road that's being cut for Pasco High School and the ones from near Moore Mickens that goes to Pasco Middle. We, we need to do better. The transportation system needs to do better. And this idea that we have six positions, and I understand that they're not new allocations, but those are six bus drivers. I would also say that the people who are working transportation phones, no disrespect for who they are, that they need some customer service help. They, they need to be able to answer a question calmly and professionally. We are in a customer service field. To tell somebody to figure it out is not acceptable. Secondly, I'd like to talk about the support program, the SSAP, the position I actually work. It says in the budget or in the, the documents for this meeting that we're gonna make sure that the kids who are staffed in that program have a two-point O or below and that they are failing two classes that year. As a teacher in that room, we're not living up to expectations. Kids are coming into my classroom above a two-point O with one failed class so that we can get them to recover. And I don't mind helping them, but if we're gonna put the letter of the law down, we need to stick to the letter of the law. I, I would also like to mention, in the progression plan, we talk about the kids doing credit recovery, especially in the middle school. I think I saw this and I didn't see it in any place else. We should be utilizing the standard-based assessment recovery that we talked about with ninth graders at the beginning of the school year. There are several kids who could have recovered credits much quicker, especially in ESY, which I helped run for Pasco, and also in the after-school program or what they used to call night school. So there's a lot of holes there that we can fix, but again, these parents, they're pleading with you to please get transportation to their kids safely. If you want, I'll meet you. We can walk them together and you can see what they're talking about.
All right, thank you. Jessica DeCusa, you can please correct me?
It's DeCusco. Soon to be right. So my name's Jessica DeCusco, as you guys now know, and some of you guys know me in here pretty well. Some of you don't, and that's okay. I'm a longtime educator going into my ninth year. I'm a product of Pasco County. I went to Cody River. I went to Chasco Middle, Gulf High School. I taught in Pasco for about five years. And I also have my master's in educational leadership. I have been. Um, I have been reading through policy and understanding it since I was president of Model Congress at Gulf High. And I have spent the last few years basically teaching our students and our community exactly how our policies affect our schools. And if you've ever seen me interacting with the public, it's a very unofficial role, but they will call, they will text, they will send pictures, because they can't get a hold of the people at our district. They don't know who to contact, they don't know how to figure it out. And if I struggle as someone with all of that background and those qualifications to get the answers I need for my own children, I can't imagine what it's like for parents who do not have that same background, who are not aware of their parental rights on all sides of the spectrum, and how they can advocate for their children. I constantly hear from our school board members, from our principals, from counselors, from everybody in our school staff that we need more parental involvement, but yet we're not talking to our parents. Okay, so another part of the problem, I live in Bexley, okay? I'm in an affluent neighborhood, my husband does very well. And let me tell you, the amount of parents that have contacted me that are now affected by this geographical difference that we seem to have, this is not to do with courtesy busing. Somebody changed how we are measuring what we consider to be two miles, and we need to be honest about it.
Thank you.
Because this is ridiculous. If I have other parents that make close to a million dollars a year that are worried about this because they can't even get their kids into place because we've also cut those programs, we have a big problem. And I wanna know how our families who are facing a housing crisis, being displaced and dealing with ten percent inflation, are also supposed to pay hundreds of dollars a month on before and after school care because we've cut their buses and they can't walk. I understand that you do not control the budget, I understand the budget very well, I have worked on fourteen million dollar budgets myself, I understand co-mingling, I understand restrictions, I understand all of it. It is also your job to advocate to the state for us, and stop being afraid of the leadership that we have and actually speak up for our people.
All right, thank you. Right, that is the end of the-
No, that, you forgot my card, I, she wrote on my card.
Oh, oh, that's, I'm so sorry. But you, you're, you said split time with non-agenda item.
No, I said with the agenda items.
Okay, I'm sorry, um, that, you, you wrote non, but if it's agenda-
I didn't mind that, she wrote that.
Okay, could, could, come up, whi- which agenda item are you speaking on?
Eleven point two.
Eleven point two, thank you.
And again, I'm gonna be speaking on Eric Pike's behalf, and she also wanted me to tell you before you start timing me, um, that the second document has an email with a student's full name and email address and disclosing private medical information, and you guys should remove it immediately. Thanks. All right, so on the equity report, um, the second document, I mean, the equity plan shows a robust, large effort of resources and focuses on eight percent of demographic of students. We have eight percent of our student body, which is black, and you break down specifically black males in A P et cetera courses. And we have eight percent of that group is indicated in A P plus courses. You focus on how to get the A P numbers up for black males, leaving out black and white females as well as any other ethnic groups. I'm not saying that I don't support black males and their education and drive for higher rigor opportunities. I have two grandkids who are half-black and they, they should have the same opportunities as all students, not because they are black, but because they are students. All students should have that opportunity. I'm saying why are we focusing so much on, and time and resources and money on just eight percent of the student body? African-American history task force was mentioned in this, but not the exemplary status goal you all approved, which is not a state required despite what Cynthia Armstrong emailed me. I've sent emails about this and nobody seems to care that we are going to spend five years of time and money, resources focusing on ensuring that we have a hundred and eighty days of every course inserting African-American history, a hundred and eighty days of every course, that's math, English, chemistry, all courses. We don't do this for any other group or nationality, not Italian, Hispanic, Muslim, LGBTQ, disabled, Christian, and no, Megan, not even Cuban, not one. Hispanic dis- demographic, by the way, is higher than the black demographic in our school system, so why? Skin color does not dictate the ability or opportunity to learn, why is this effort being placed there? Socioeconomic should be the focus, more than skin color, as those students statistically lack specific support at home. There should be a task force for those kids as they are the ones left behind more than black students are. Meanwhile, you are forgetting and not focusing at all on the white students or black females. Why? How can you support this in your, our district? This is not equity as you preach, ho- at all, how could you say this?
Right, thank you. Right, that closes, uh, public comment on agenda items. We now will move on to, um, United School Employee to Pasco, Don Peace.
Mrs. Armstrong, can I just interject really quickly on the equity report item that was just spoken about?
Yes, uh, Phil, go right ahead.
I just want to be clear, that is a report that the state requires us to file annually, and they identify the demographics that they want us to report an action plan on. Um, so it, these really are not necessarily items that the district identifies, um, we are simply complying with, uh, the state's requirement that we file that report annually.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that clarification. Right, Don Peace.
Superintendent Browning, Chair Armstrong, honorable board members and district staff, good evening, I hope you're all well. Uh, just a couple of updates tonight, uh, first of all, I would also like to say that U C E P would like to thank all of our S R Os and S S Os for the job that they do each day protecting and working with our students. They do an outstanding job, and they deserve all the credit that they get. Over the past several weeks, U C E P has participated by Zoom in meet and greets with new teachers to Pasco. This past Saturday, we along with many district vendors participated in the new teacher picnic at Starkey Park. We were able to meet and speak to many new employees of the district. It was also good to see board members Bodman, Armstrong, and Harding there as well. This was a very nice opportunity for our new employees to get to interact with district staff, board members, and get acquainted with benefit opportunities. On Monday, U C E P was also a participant in the new teacher orientation at Lanta Lakes High School, where we were able to meet most of the new teachers coming in, uh, to the district this year. Again, this was an opportunity for U C E P to give information to new employees, and we especially wanna say thank you to Charlotte Kralik and Tricia Graham for working with us to make these opportunities available. This morning, Jeff Larson and I were able to greet our West Side Transportation employees at their orientation. Thanks goes out to Gary Sawyer for that opportunity as well. We continue to have conversation regarding lightening the load on employees and how the district can work towards that goal. I'm sure this will be an ongoing conversation as legislation needs to be addressed where appropriate. U C E P is ready to return to the table to further discuss economics and some additional M O Us. We continue to work towards getting salary improvements for all employees as soon as possible. As we gear up for this new year, I hope we can work together to see to it that we have a positive start to the year and that our employees can feel respected. Accomplishing that will help ensure our students are provided a great educational opportunity, thank you.
Thank you. Right, school member, uh, committee reports.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm gonna let Mr. Gad or Ms. Hammitt talk about the, uh, trip to New York, but I did wanna say a couple of things on our bond issue, we'll consider that a committee report. Uh, two things they probably won't say, um, but it was interesting listening to the, uh, the underwriters and those that helped price and rate, and their, uh, overwhelming confidence, I guess would be the word, in the data and information provided by our staff and the timeliness of it. And, um, they were extremely complimentary about the thoroughness of the answers and responses and how everything verified and checked out. And, uh, I was pleased to hear that, but at the end of the day, uh, there is another school district in Florida who went to market, what was it, Tammy, three days before us?
Yes, it's on.
Uh, and they're a large, they're a larger district than us, they have an A rating like us, but, you know, it's based on size, so they're an A plus, an extra point. So they have a slightly higher rating, not because of quality, but size. And, uh, we ended up, uh, getting our bond issue done for less, at a lower percentage interest rate than what our larger district, uh, in, in the state is. And so that reflects upon the, the, uh, management of our system and how well the auditors and the underwriters and stuff look at our financial data. So anyway, we did that, and then, uh, we have completed the construction management, uh, rankings, and those will be, they're not public information yet, but they'll go out and we'll be working, uh, here in a couple of weeks on the interviews for those selected for the, uh, Starkey K A edition and stuff, so those are the two things we've worked on the past week.
Right, thank you, uh, Mrs. Cremly.
Oh, I had no committees meet, thank you.
I had no committees. I had two. Um, so as you guys know, I serve as the charter school, on the charter school committee, and, um, seven twenty-one, they had a principals meeting with S L A management, which is the lunch organizer for the charter schools, and I've been keeping you guys kinda up to date on what's going on. So, um, I was really grateful that I was invited to that. So there has been some concerns, so Mr. Youngman arranged for this meeting to occur, and Tiffany Long, the F N S director that's filling in for Stephanie, as she's on maternity leave, managers from S L A management, Pasco County, and the charter school principals, and Mrs. Coon were on that call. It was really informative that allowed, and allowed our principals to voice their concerns around menus, staff movement, and lunchroom audits. S L A agreed to be more communicative when they have to make necessary staff changes. Changes in menu were also discussed because sometimes they have last minute changes due to supply chain. Um, and it was agreed that the district and S L A would be more, um, communicative about that as well, which is super important for those students who have dietary restrictions due to health conditions. There was also some discussion about the S L A checklist, um, that might, to match the district's checklist in their audit, so when it is communicated to us, the board, it is correctly communicated. And I believe that we concluded that F N S is gonna work on that as well. So overall, it was a really good meeting, and I wanna thank Jeff, Tiffany, uh, Mrs. Coon, and S L A management, and all of our F N S staff, and our charter school principals for all their hard work in ensuring that our students have full bellies, so I was really happy with that. Um, okay, and then I also serve on the Board of Directors for Florida School Board Association, and so I had told you guys last week that there was gonna be a, uh, kind of a special Board of Directors, um, meeting. Um, and there was, um, to discuss the, um, Florida School Boards, so so, Association's role with the Youth Behavior Risk Survey, which is the R B R S, Y B R S survey. Um, the Florida depart-, I don't know if you know, but the Florida Department pulled away from the survey in April. And so we decided as a organization that we were gonna write, um, the Education Commissioner D A the letter asking if F S B A could have a seat at the table when this new survey is made. Um, and I'm happy to say that it passed unanimously, and I'm hopeful that F S B A can partner with the Florida Department of Education on this initiative, and I gave, I gave you guys, um, I printed out a sample letter of it, just so you can see the draft. Um, but it was, it was a really good meeting and good conversation, and that's it.
All right, thank you so much, and I had no committee, um, meetings this past week. Right, so that now brings us, um, to Superintendent Browning.
I have nothing tonight, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Gad.
Um, I also wanted to, um, comment about the bond pricing. Um, I, I was very, um, pleased with the outcome, and Tammy can give you a little more detail on it, but, um, as both Mr. Altman and Ms. Taylor will attest, when the bond folks got finished talking to us, 'cause it's kind of a dynamic process where you're engaged in, you know, some strategy, but also watching orders come in for the bonds. Uh, when it's all done, someone comes in and talks to you about how well you fared, and I said to them, well, now that you're finished with all that gobbledygook, what is our interest rate? Um, uh, when I bought my first house, my interest rate was twelve percent, I don't know if any of the rest of you in here had that experience. Um, but I kinda- Yeah, I kinda live and die on interest rates, and our school system has been extremely lucky. Um, for the past few years, the borrowing we've done, which is very advantageous for us, especially in an economy like this with inflation and interest rates going up, has been under three percent. And I think, uh, prior to this last one, um, we were at about three point two percent, and the true cost on the bonds that we, um, recently borrowed was three point eight seven six. And, uh, in this economy, that is an incredibly good rate, uh, on those bonds. And, uh, so I'm very pleased that we went to the market when we did, um, because, um, those opportunities may not always be available for us out in the future. Um, it was a, a, a good experience and a lot of kudos, um, uh, to the team that we surround ourselves with. In particular, our financial advisors are great at working with us and making sure that the folks we're working with, um, are on the up and up. And, um, it was a good experience, and I think it was, uh, good for this district that we got into the market when we did, thank you.
Right, thank you so much. Mr. Shibley.
Uh, just an addition or addendum to item eleven point one that has been uploaded into Board docs for the board's approval, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Coon.
It's that time of year when we welcome our ten month employees back, and today and tomorrow, we welcome back our bus drivers on the west side. Next week, welcome back, uh, bus drivers and assistants on the central and east, and our food service employees, uh, next week as well. So an exciting time of year for all those ten month employees coming back, and look forward to a great school year, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Mrs. Taylor. Um, we are going to pull item number thirteen point two, the Investment Oversight Committee, um, that'll be brought back to you at a further date. And, um, Ray had most of the good news on the pricing. Uh, it was a very interesting process, we did have some years that were oversold. Um, the out years, of course, are where the market is not tending to pull in the sales, we were very fortunate. One of the first sales that came in when we opened at nine o'clock was from Bank of Ozarks for the out year, so that really gave us a goo- a good feel to start out. Um, we didn't end up selling all of the bonds, but, um, Bank of America, who was our senior manager, decided to underwrite ten point eight million dollars of the unsold bonds. And our average maturity was twelve point one years, again, with the interest rate of just under three point eight eight percent.
Wonderful, thank you, that is great news. That means we'll have more-
They were, uh, telling us to expect, they virtually said five percent, and then, right before we went up, they were up to five point two five, so that was a really great outcome that we had.
Well, we have a long history of doing very well in, in our bonds and our bond rating, and that's reflected, and they're wanting to take our bonds even at the lower rate. So thank you so much, great job. All right, um, that brings us to, yes.
Hi, uh, Mrs. Gant, I'm representing all of the Assistant Superintendents for Schools. Um, they are at a training on their way back tonight, um, so I have a couple of announcements I'd like to share. The first one is, it is my privilege to recommend to the board Shannon Middleton for promotion to principal at Deer Park Elementary School. I would like Mrs. Middleton and her family to stand. Shannon is a committed and passionate educator, who is in her twenty-six year as an educator in our school district. She began her career as a special education teacher at Shady Hills Elementary, where she taught children with emotional and behavioral needs. She then moved to Schrader Elementary School and continued to develop her skills by supporting students with varying exceptionalities in their mainstream class year, classrooms. After ten years as a classroom teacher, she decided to go into administration so that she could expand her role and impact on students. Mrs. Middleton began her administrative career at Sunray Elementary School as a Title One Assistant Principal, and then she moved to Trinity Elementary School, where she continued to develop her skills by focusing on meeting the needs of students. She has a strong emphasis on highly effective core instruction, a focus on collaboration among adults in the building to utilize each person's strength, and a laser focus on using data to improve student outcome. She is truly excited about the opportunity to lead her own school and to continue to have a greater impact on the students who attend Deer Park Elementary. Shannon is here tonight, supported by her husband David Middleton, a veteran Pasco Schools employee and administrator at Wendell Crin. Her son Drew, who is headed to the University of Florida in the fall, and her daughter Alexandra, who cannot be here tonight because she's in a leadership training at, at the band of Mitchell High School. So they're all super proud of her. She is also supported by her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Toro, who I know to be some of the most amazing people. Mrs. Toro is a retired Pasco teacher and a current guest teacher for our school district. Um, and as a small aside, Mrs. Middleton was my assistant principal, um, for six years, and so all of us are so super proud and looking forward to her leading Deer Park Elementary.
Welcome.
And on behalf of all of the school superintendents, um, and you'll have to slip out if you want to and get pictures on the ground. On behalf of the school superintendents, we are excited to announce that all of our campuses are hosting transition events this week. are hosting transition events this week. At the elementary level, we have kindergarten camp. In some schools, it has already kicked off, but definitely will be at least Thursday and Friday of this week. Sixth grade jumpstart camps are also on Thursday and Friday of this week. And on our high schools, our ninth graders are being welcomed to campuses. We appreciate the teachers and administrators who have worked diligently to plan fun and exciting events, and also events to help calm student and parent nerves. We are excited to kick off a wonderful school year.
Thank you so much. All right. So that, I'm not used to that being over so quickly.
I got it.
All right, there are no expulsion recommendations or hearings. Brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any items that Board Members wishes to pull?
Mrs. Coon already had answered my question about the transportation. And the one I had questions on was pulled.
We're pulling 13.2?
Yeah, we're pulling 13.2 for a later date. And we have addendum 11.1.
Okay, so I'll move approval of the consent agenda with the exception of 13.2 and with the addition of the addendum for 11.1.
Second.
All right. First, Altman. Second, Bowdoin. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. There are no items pulled for discussion. So that brings us to miscellaneous action items. That brings us to 16.1, District Control Open Enrollment Plan, 2022-23 School Choice, final approval. I need a motion.
So moved.
First, Altman. Second, Crumley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Right. Magnet Plan 2022-2023, final approval. Need a motion? Move to approve.
Second.
Right. First, Crumley. Second, Altman. Any discussion?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I want to thank staff for changing some wording in there a few weeks ago to clarify it. And I just want to acknowledge that, you know, we're talking, a lot of people are talking about busing. And this has also come up in this magnet plan. And that's why the wording was clarified. So we're more clear to families. Because I have had families reach out in my district that were concerned because they wanted a hub in Land O' Lakes for Kirkland Ranch Academy of Innovation. I know that Mrs. Coon has spoken with them and I've talked to the superintendent about it. I realize that we have a busing shortage. You know, I wish that, I wish that we didn't have this issue. And if there was any way that we could make it possible to get a hub, I would appreciate it. That's it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Student Progression Plan, 2022-2023, final approval. I need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. First, Harding. Second, Bowdoin. Any discussion? All in favor?
I was just going to make a comment. There was a reference earlier. A speaker mentioned the Student Progression Plan. And I just wanted to note, it sounded like it was more of a practice problem than a policy problem. So I think that's what it was, that maybe people weren't following it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to individual Board Member reports. Mr. Altman.
I really don't have a report. I just want to thank Mr. Shively and Ms. Taylor for making the effort to get factual, clear information. Because it's been kind of appalling, the gross distortions and completely inaccurate information that some citizens are sharing on social media and standing up and speaking. And so I think having very clear, concise information should hopefully resolve that. And I would hope that those people would be willing to acknowledge the inaccuracies and also share the accurate information and the facts. So thank you all for your time and effort in doing that.
Mrs. Crumley?
Sure. And I would second that. It was a really great report. Thank you. Very clear and transparent. Thank you. Also like to add that I attended the SRO luncheon, which just happened to be yesterday. And I don't need to say a whole lot more since we had a wonderful presentation earlier, other than the SRO of the year was awarded. And after listening to all the testimonies from staff, teachers, and students, particularly at all the schools of the nominees, I don't know how they could possibly pick one because they're all great. But I think it's Lieutenant Clover Sett from Zephyr Hills High School won. And it was a really great event.
I had it rehearsed, so if you wanted to.
Corporal, sorry. Corporal Clover Sett. And it was a wonderful event. And I just want to highlight to all of our parents how we really have worked very hard with the Sheriff's Department to make our school safe for all of the kiddos.
Okay. Mrs. Bowdoin?
I participated in the third meeting of the five-year review for Land O' Lakes High School's International Baccalaureate Program. We worked on the self-assessment sessions titled Environment and Student Support. One section that we were able to mark as highly developed was the increased support and commitment to the IB Continuum of Opportunities. And that was because the district now offers the full continuum from K-12 with the Primary Years Program at Pineview L., the Middle Years Program at Pineview Middle. So these programs have also, I want to acknowledge that they have been added on the west side as well. But I'm focusing on Land O' Lakes because we're going through the review right now. Additionally, I heard some really good feedback about the FLEBS, the Florida IB Training, that people have attended. And they agreed it was very well worth their time. At the last meeting, and look at Mrs. Hilton isn't here again, so I get to share good information. At the last meeting, I said that 93% of the graduating IB seniors at Land O' Lakes High School had earned their IB diploma. That number has now increased to 96%, which is really amazing. Really amazing that 96% of those seniors earned their IB diploma. And that really is a testament to the hard work and dedication of the students, but also their teachers, because they do a lot with the kids. So congratulations. That diploma guarantees those students the Bright Future Scholarship. And for many students, it also means several college credits were earned and they were admitted into prestigious public and private universities. The new teacher welcome event at Starkey Wilderness Park on Saturday was remarkable. I was excited to meet several of our new teachers. It would be wonderful if we could do that for all of our employees, like we did after Irma. I hope we can plan more events for employees and families because they really are great culture builders. We've said a lot about the SROs, so thank you again to all the SROs. I also joined our HR team in welcoming the new international teachers to our district. This was yesterday. The teachers are joining us from Ghana, India, Jamaica, Kenya, and the Philippines. The principals and assistant principals were so excited to meet their teachers face to face. Literally, these teachers came into the room. They ran over and hugged the principals. I was standing there, so I got hugged too. So that was cool. But they were very excited to be here. And these are experienced teachers. And Sarah Dufrain had worked really hard on this project along with all of our team. But these teachers went through a rigorous process and they are highly qualified. So we're lucky to have them. They were screened by TPG Cultural Exchange. Then our own HR department screened them. And that, our HR department includes former principal, school principals. The Office of Leading and Learning also screened these applicants. And then the principals and the APs did interviews. The teachers have to go through all the same background checks as our teachers, and they must meet state eligibility requirements for certification. And they must be experienced teachers. So they are held to the same requirements as our teachers. They have to have a minimum of a bachelor's degree. And many of them have masters and PhDs. And we were all, we were there talking to them and we saw that. They have to have at least two years of full-time K-12 teaching experience. They must be currently working as a K-12 educator at the time of their application. And they must also be fluent in English. So we are getting some really quality people with these teachers. So I was, I thought it was great that we had those teachers there. And I think Mrs. Harding wants to talk more, so I'm not going to get into the data. I know that she likes the data part. But we do continue, while I'm excited to have those teachers, we do continue to have vacancies in our schools. And we know school is starting right around the corner. So we've got to do everything we can to get qualified teachers working with our students. I've been out and about, talking to different groups. And I was surprised when someone asked me about teaching, because she said, "I'm highly educated and I'm thinking about going to teaching." And she wasn't at all familiar with alternative certification. It's been around for so long. I used to work with those teachers. So I thought I would at least mention it. So if you have a bachelor's degree and you're interested in teaching, please reach out to our HREQ department at recruitment, oh, HREQ underscore recruitment@pasco.k12 FL.us to learn more about alternative certification. And I did get an email from a former student at UT today. And I knew exactly who to send him to. So that was good. But it's just a little commercial for recruiting teachers. The busing, I mentioned it a little bit, but I do want to acknowledge, you know, that, you know, we hear you, the parents who are upset about busing. People here tonight, I mean, I know that area well, because my kids all went to those schools. I've walked that area many times. I've, I know there's no sidewalks. I've talked to county commissioners about it. Nobody here, I think it's safe to say, nobody here is happy about this. And eliminating courtesy busing. And it's frustrating, I know, even, and I know that's one of the parents that they pay for it. And I know how you feel. I felt exactly the same way. The problem is, we can't even find people, we can't find bus drivers. But I do want to acknowledge their concerns. And, you know, I believe we need to continue to advocate with our legislators, our legislators about bus eligibility and funding. So if we, if the eligibility changes and it changes to 1.5 miles, which I think the legislature did entertain a couple years ago and didn't pass, I know your eyes are, I know it didn't pass, but they had talked about that. But if they do that, they got to, we've got to make sure that we get funding for that as well. And to continue to advocate for sidewalks for our kids. I am fully committed to improving salaries to recruit and retain bus drivers. And maybe we consider some of these things in our legislative platform. I don't know if anybody has anything later to add for the superintendent about how they calculate the mileage, because I'm not familiar with that. But the last thing I wanted to say was to thank Leah Mitchell from Leading and Learning. She acknowledged that I've said at the last two board meetings, to please find ways to take things off the plates of our teachers and administrators. And she asked for suggestions, so I am gathering information to get back to her. But I just want to recognize that she did, she is listening. She hears us. So thank you. I think that was it.
Yeah. You said a lot, but I was going to say so. Oh, sorry. It's okay. I do want to acknowledge that I know that Policy 5120 was not discussed today, but I wanted to make it very clear that I have had multiple conversations with staff and the superintendent about addressing the difference between a disruption of a parent versus the disruption of a child, as well as allowing an appeal to the school board. So I have had conversations and I have made it known that I would like to see the policy change and brought to the board soon so that we can continue to have that discussion. So I just wanted to make that publicly clear. Mr. Shively, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the UNISIC grant, because I'm getting a lot of phone calls about it from, like stressed out teachers and confused. So I was just wondering if you could give us a little background on it, like who gets it, where are the funds coming from, et cetera?
You referring to the funds for the 13 state identified schools?
Yes.
Yes. And I'm guessing it is about the job fair and the promotional materials that have gone out about the state provided supplement.
Yes. I've had a lot.
Yes. So that is actually not a new, that is actually not a new program. It is a program that the state essentially funds for schools that it identifies as being in need of improvement. We have 13 schools on that list going into the upcoming school year. And essentially, what the state does is require that part of the funds that they provide to those schools for school improvement be used to provide those salary supplements to not only the existing teachers at the school that meet the effective and highly effective VAM requirements, but also to offer that as an incentive to get some of your other effective or highly effective teachers to transfer into those schools. So that's not necessarily a new phenomenon, but because we have 13 of those schools in place for next year, and we've got a lot of vacancies to fill, we have been trying hard to get those positions filled and get them filled in a way where if they do hire teachers from our existing schools, those schools that are losing those teachers have an opportunity to gather themselves before students walk in the door on August 10.
So just to clarify, so our existing teachers that are in those schools still will be able to, or if they transfer to that school, still will be able to get those?
They will be eligible as long as they have students tied to them and they meet the VAM requirements articulated by the state. So as long as, as long as they meet the requirements articulated by the state, it doesn't matter whether they're there now or they come in from another school. And I do know that we, that we have been answering some emails and some questions from staff, existing staff at some of those schools, questioning whether or not they are eligible. And they are eligible as long as they meet those state criteria. And I'll let Mrs. Gant chime in if I've said something that she thinks is inaccurate or.
I think it's very accurate. The number one way to improve outcomes for children is to have highly effective teachers in front of them. Highly effective teachers are teachers who have some experience. And those children in those schools deserve the opportunity to be taught by someone who is a proven educator, who has mastered their craft. And so this is an attraction. It's not any monies from the school district's operating budget. It is straight from a state grant. And it is a great incentive if you are highly effective or effective and you are kind of mobile and you want to move around, make a difference at a school. And as my husband said, another thousand dollars after taxes each month is not a bad thing. So just, it is, it is a great opportunity. And we wanted to make sure that people were aware of it. That is what the advertisement is about.
I think that's, it is important that teachers are aware of that. I'm sorry.
No, no, make another comment.
Is it okay?
Yeah, make a comment. Well, it's, it's hard because now our teacher, now our principals are scrambling because we got people fighting over the same, fighting over the same teachers and all this disruption at the last minute. It's not like they're so, it's a limited pool to get our teachers from. And it's, yeah, it's just.
And I will, I will echo those sentiments that it is very inconvenient. You know, unfortunately, we received the listing of the schools that were eligible for the funds at a very late hour. I do have to give credit, I know it doesn't feel like it, but I do need to give credit to Brian Schultz and Stephanie Sheridan in Title I, because they turned around, coordinated with each of those 13 schools, developed a budget for all of these additional funds, and turned it around in an amazing amount of time to try and avoid as many of these issues as we could. I know Mary Martin is here from HR. They've been working on a lot of the initiatives you were talking about. They stepped up to the plate immediately, scheduled a job fair, worked with Stephanie on communications that went out to staff at those schools and our other schools, kind of advertising these opportunities. So I agree with you. It is a very inconvenient time to be shuffling around. But I would bet dollars to doughnuts that we are doing this at a pace probably quicker than many other school systems in the state.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. I too want to reiterate that it's such an amazing morning on Saturday, spent with our new teachers and their families and welcoming them, welcoming them to their Pasco County family. So I want to thank our Office of Leading and Learning for putting on such a wonderful event. And also a huge shout out to our vendors. They're supporting our new teachers and their families. Truly think it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful school year. I'm really excited. I too want to reiterate, being able to celebrate our amazing SROs, I want to thank them. Congratulations to our School Safety Guard of the Year, Wendy Gonzalez-Miller from Schrader Elementary. Our School Resource Officer of the Year, Corporal Charles Clover Settle and from Zephyr Hills High. Community Outreach Award winner was Kevin Stevenson from Marchmont. And a big congratulations, congratulations to all the SROs, like were mentioned earlier, for being named Law Enforcement Agency of the Year. Just thank you for keeping our students and staff safe. And as Ms. Bowdoin had mentioned yesterday, we got to welcome 25 new teachers from all over the country. Some of the subject areas that are being represented, I think this is a great opportunity for our students. I actually have had the opportunity to go and teach overseas in China. So to see overseas come in here, I think it's just such an awesome opportunity for our students. But some of the subject areas that are being represented are 15 elementary school teachers, eight ELA teachers, nine ESC teachers, eight math teachers, eight science teachers, and one social studies teacher. And yesterday, we got to celebrate them. There's another 20, I think 24, that are currently waiting on their visas to be processed that are going to join us in August and September, which is super awesome. And HREQ and their admin welcomed these teachers yesterday with a really fun ice cream social, like Ms. Bowdoin mentioned. They were excited. They were like running in and hugging. It was, it was really wonderful. It just really made my heart so full. The teachers received welcome baskets filled with goodies from the Pasco Foundation and HREQ. I want to thank Sarah Dufrain, Mary Martin, and all the amazing HREQ staff for making these new teachers feel so welcomed. I'm so excited for them to be joining our Pasco County family. And I too want to acknowledge the busing concern. I feel like me and Ms. Coon talk all the time about the busing concern. I am getting a lot of emails and phone calls from concerned and worried parents. And I, and I hear you. And I too have walked many of these routes that our students are going to be having to walk. Some of them, almost an hour to school. It's in the heat, in the rain. So I am worried about attendance. Um, so I am worried about attendance, um, safety. Um, I have, uh, reached out to our commissioners. Um, I'm trying to get a meeting set up with them, um, to discuss even the safety committee that we have, um, that we partner with the county with, to try to get some of these, um, concerns addressed. I know a lot of our students are walking without sidewalks or lights. I'm even hearing from concerned parents that are, that have staffed children. Um, some of them are both parents that work in our school system, and so that's kinda puts an undue burden on those families. I also know that this week, there was a little glitch in our system, and I think Mrs. Coon had, had said that that was, that was being fixed. Um, and that was fixed, correct, Mrs. Coon? With the, um, some, some of us, some, some of us, yeah, it was, it was done fast, 'cause someone's saying they had a bus pass, but then it said they weren't eligible, et cetera, so...
If, if the student had a bus pass in the system, they always had a bus pass in the system. What the glitch was, is there was a, an issue with my student talking to our routing software. And so, it had ineligible places where students were eligible. But if they had a bus pass listed, it was, it, it continued to be listed. There, there was never any issue with bus passes being listed where there weren't actually bus passes. We have a very full communication plan, um, where parents will be getting lots of calls. We found that to be very effective with the bell time changes in January, that if we make lots and lots of reminder calls and tell them, "Please check your bus pass," it minimizes the number of first day of school calls that we get. Because the first day of school is a very difficult time to be starting bus passes. It's much better if we get them done in advance. So, that's why that was discovered, is because we have five different calls that will be going to families about bus passes.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and so, I just wanted to let the community know that we definitely, at least I know, I, I'm hearing you, and you could hear it from my peers, that we're hearing you. And we know this is not ideal, but we are very, very, very short, um, bus drivers. It's not even a funding thing, it's, we don't have drivers. Um, and so, um, I'm gonna continue to, to advocate through the county and to continue to see if we can find other avenues that we can try to get some of these kiddos, um, on buses. Uh, but just know, we, we hear you, and, um, I, I definitely share some of the, a lot of the same concerns that you have. And I too had on my notes to thank Ms. Mitchell for reaching out and asking about what we could take off teachers' plates. So, thank you for listening and, and being proactive with that. She's in the back. So, thank you.
Alright, alright, by the time it gets to me, a lot of has already been said, uh, so I won't repeat. Uh, but I, I did attend the events that they mentioned. Uh, the, the most, but I did wanna say a couple of things about the SRO and the, uh, SSG, the schools' security guards, safety guards. When we looked at the videos that the different schools put together to, um, nominate their, their SSG or the SRO for the award, it really brought out the point that they are more than just safety. They become a part of the school community. The, they interact with the teachers, they interact with the students, they have fun with the teachers and the students. They really become part of the whole culture of the school. And it is just amazing to see how these kids respond, uh, to the silliness that s- some of these, um, uh, school resource officers have. You, you never would guess, looking at them and all their uniforms, that they could actually put on a wig and sing karaoke. Uh, but, but it, it is really amazing to see them work with the students. And so, the students actually look at to the, to them as role models in addition, just to be there to keep them safe. Uh, it's talking about alternative certification, um, for teaching. When I was at the, uh, picnic, I was speaking to one gentleman that had, uh, been in the HVAC, um, business for years, before he had to leave because of knee problems and so on. So, sure enough, the HVAC teacher at Marchman found out about that, 'cause they were in the same group, and he said, "You're gonna come teach at Marchman." So, uh, he, he looked into it and saw he could do the alternate certification. And so, we picked up a, a teacher through that. So, it's, finding teachers is really something that we all can help do, as well as bus drivers. We want to make sure that everybody knows that that opportunity is out there and, and what the benefits are, and that, um, they can come join our, our team. And we, the kids would really appreciate it. And guess what, people? The, the students are coming, but before the students come, the teachers come back. And they're here in training now, and together we learn, I believe. We don't have our staff here to tell us all about it, but I know they're, all our teachers are busy, busy learning. And then, uh, the following Monday, we have, uh, Together We Lead. We've got all the principals and administrators getting together to see how they're gonna be opening up our schools and welcoming all our teachers back. So, we're, we're getting there. Summer is, is closing up, and parents are going, "Yay, time to send the kids back to school." And we'll be ready for them, and we're excited to have all the students come back.
It's the most wonderful time of the year.
Yes. So, so thank you all, for everybody that's been working, uh, towards this and, and s- making sure that we kick off our, our school year, uh, on a very positive note. So, that is the, um, let's see, I now need to ask, is any new business? And now I need to ask, are there any, uh, comments from the attorney?
Nothing from me.
Okay, and superintendent, any last words? Right, so that will close the business part of the meeting. And that will move us into the public comment, uh, on non-agenda items. And, uh, Attorney Alfonso will be...